Board members, we'll start. Good morning. Okay, I'm on. Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. It is June 28th and welcome to your boardroom. And I would like to have our roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Flynn.
Here.
And Supervisor Long.
Here. Thank you. Now we'll rise for a moment of reflection and take a moment if we might as we're approaching our July 4th holiday to think of the wonderful country we all have the privilege of living in, the responsibility that comes with that, and our freedoms before us. Thank you. Mr. Johnston, would you lead us in the pledge?
Madam Chair, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, where each nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a motion and a second on the minutes of June 20th and the 21st and hearing no objection, so ordered. And at this time, we'll have our agenda review. Good morning, Mr. Johnston.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have a couple of modifications to the agenda. Consent item number 12 is we're requesting that that be removed. The auditor controller did not have the opportunity to review in detail that item. Consent item 23 has a revised page one of the water supply agreement. Item 37 has a request for a continuance to July 12th. There is some question on item 38, but hopefully that will get resolved in the next hour. Item 38, I said there's just some question on, what is it, a side letter, Christine?
That's the number two.
Okay, so we're waiting on that. And the item number 43 has a revised page of the board letter. Supervisory district should read three, not four. And that is everything.
Okay, so we're going to remove item 12, not just move it to the regular agenda? We're going to remove it and to continue it?
Right. It's been, well, pardon me. That's a good question here. The first note says request item be moved to regular agenda, but then the other note says to advise auditor controller didn't have the opportunity to review, so is it a poll?
No, just wanting to confirm. Just moving it.
Oh, okay, just to the regular agenda, sorry.
Ms. Cohen, did you have?
The auditor has not reviewed that item.
So your request is to have it be continued for, to the next board meeting? Is there a problem with that?
I think there may be. I misread that. I thought it was to be continued, but it says to move to the regular agenda and a note that the auditor controller hadn't reviewed it yet, so we'll need to discuss that.
All right, why don't you discuss that and we'll do other things. We'll pull it for this time, we'll pull it right this moment for consideration on the regular agenda, but I'd like somehow for you to determine whether that's the best direction. If we have an urgency of acting on it, I guess that's the question. Okay? I know it is. Other agenda review items? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Still on the consent?
Yes.
I would ask that 21 be removed just temporarily. I have a question about it.
For discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, then why don't we, with the agenda review, with the actions noted, act on that piece of it and then we'll pull the discussion items. For discussion, we're going to discuss 12 and we're going to discuss 21, but with those changes?
Move the consent item except for 12 and 21 and the revision on page one of item 23.
And the other request continuance items, okay?
Yes.
That's a motion?
What, what, what?
A motion on the agenda review and the consent agenda?
Oh, yes.
With the recommended changes and conditions, okay. Seeing no objection to that.
Argue, do not change.
That's okay. All right, then let's, could we have a moment to discuss 12, Mr. Ruffin? Why don't we come up and, why don't you come up here and we'll discuss 12 and see if we have some issues there with a continuation, which would be until the 12th?
Until July 12th. Chair Long.
Good morning.
Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Flynn, Mr. Johnston. My name is Paul Ruffin with the General Services Agency. Item 12 is asking your board to approve some master service agreements, which would take effect on July 1 of this year, starting Friday. The reason that we're asking it to be approved today is because of that fact about fiscal year starting in just a couple of days. The items that are in front of you are a consolidation of efforts from our department and some of the customer departments inside the county, where we try to consolidate the needs for certain services and then bring them to your board when we recognize that the total amount is going to exceed $100,000 in the fiscal year. By state law and county ordinance, the purchasing agent cannot approve contracts for services that exceed $100,000. Those items need to come to your board for approval. The item in front of you today is practically the same as the letter you've seen the last couple of years, where we have identified the process that we go through to compile the list. The contractors that you see on exhibit one are practically the same as you've seen in past years. There's been no changes there. The budgetary impacts are ones that have been reviewed by the county executive office. With respect to the legal pieces of it, the contracts that we use are ones that are based on a template and some boilerplate language that over time we worked out with county council's office. So for those reasons, we're not seeing a fiscal impact to what you're doing today. Something additional has to happen for a department to request or require services to come to them. For those reasons, we're asking that the item be approved today.
Questions or comments, Ms. Cohen?
The auditor's office did not receive this item in accordance with the administrative manual for a ten working day review time before it's filed on the agenda. This is not the first time and we just reserve the right that Mr. Ruffin bring back the item if we have some problems with your board approval today.
Okay.
I have a few questions. One, it wasn't because of the urgency that it was skipped from going to the auditor controller?
Yes, we had the final numbers that we needed to get the letter together last week, so putting those exhibits and packages and so forth together resulted in a decision.
Okay, and you need to have this approved before the fiscal year?
That's appropriate because the departments will start using the services come July 1.
Okay, and then two questions I have about the report itself. How does this compare over time? Are we, are these, just having these figures here, it's hard for me to say, well, that's a lot of money compared to last year because I don't know what last year was. Do you have some kind of information about how these figures compare? Because it's multiple millions of dollars.
Supervisor Parks, there would be differences based on who the particular vendor is. When we compile the list, my staff in procurement is looking at how much has been spent over time, but then we would also go to the individual departments requesting the services and find what they say are their needs for the upcoming fiscal years. So there would be some gains and some losses depending based on which vendor. I'd be more than happy to provide you some information.
I would like to have that. And then just a final question, just looking at the list, I note that you have a temporary staffing for a company called Core Staff of $2.5 million. Just on the surface of it, it seems like that's a lot of money and I don't know how that compares. So that's one thing that I, that, you know, really stood out to me because that's a lot of temporary help, I think.
Hold on a second. I'm bringing in Rosa, the purchasing agent, who can speak to that particular item.
The Core Staff contract, the amount you see on there is actually lower than it was in years past. We have had a high of 3.2 million with Core Staff. Last year we saw a drop, we saw a dip because of the budget cuts and what have you, and departments did cut back on their extra help. So we ended the year right around 2.3 million. My expectation this year round, talking to our agencies, is that we're going to see a slight increase, so what you see here is 2.5. We are allowing for some of the departments to start ramping up again, but it is lower than it has been in the past.
Well, I thank you for the information. My understanding, the reason why you have to come to the board if it's over $100,000 is so we can have some look and really take a good look at it. And I, just having the figures here without a little bit more background on past experiences is hard for me to look and see if this is fiscally responsible. Thank you for the response.
I just, I just had a point. One of the cities in the county got into the press because the city manager approved a contract for $4 million. I don't think this is like that. And the city manager said he had council approval to do these kinds of things, which caused a lot of questions to be raised. I don't think this is that same type of situation, as I understand it.
No, I wouldn't consider.
That's good enough for me. What I would prefer to do, Madam Chair, is to make a motion to approve this with the condition that the, Ms. Cohen be allowed to look at it and if she has anything that she wants to bring to the board, to bring it at our next regular meeting. Is that okay, Christine?
Thank you.
That's a motion?
I'll second the motion and also look forward to seeing over time how these figures compare. Thank you.
Okay, that's a motion and a second and you understand the direction there and certainly support the motion and so we'll move that item. The historical perspective of the contracts probably would be a good look for all of us to have. Okay?
We'll do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then the other item was item 21 for discussion?
Right. Item 21 involves the city of Ojai and the county with transportation services. I'm not bringing this up, by the way, to try to get even with Supervisor Bennett. That's not my motive. I hope he hears me. But I understand the demonstration project and that was with Mira Monte and that's $204,000 which the city of Ojai paid to allow for that demonstration project, which we're allowed to do if there's a need, and there was a need there. But the other one, the $300,000 for service to continue to Miners Oaks and to Mira Monte seems just high to me. It represents really one-third the cost of providing SCAT services, SCAT now I'm talking about, to the unincorporated area, primarily in the west end of West County. So this is one-third of that contribution by the county to SCAT and it seems that the proportion isn't, isn't good there. So my question would be, and you can come back with it, would be why such a high cost here as compared with total SCAT services, understanding the use of the trolley is serving, the trolley is serving the communities of Miners Oaks and Mira Monte? And, you know, one-third, it seems out of range. The other question I have is the level of service higher than the level of service to the other unincorporated areas that SCAT serves and that the county pays for?
Supervisor Flynn, Kathy Connell from the Transportation Department. It is true that the county pays just under $900,000 a year for SCAT service and that is figured by all of the miles in the unincorporated area. So between the four cities and the county, the county pays for the services within primarily the road to Ojai, the Nylund Acres area, and Saticoy. The SCAT operating budget for just the local money is approximately $14 million. Now, most of that is covered by federal and the $14 million is what's left. Our portion of that $900,000 is a percentage of the miles. So while we don't serve a great deal of constituents, if you will, with that money, because a lot of ours is just miles as opposed to groups of people, the trolley, in fact, is covering areas and it primarily covers Miners Oaks and Mira Monte. It's two different routes.
I understand.
The, the cost of that has to do with the fact that the city of Ojai operates it, does not get the same kind of federal funding that SCAT gets, and so it becomes a 100% local responsibility.[1800.37] responsibility. The ridership is very high.
That pretty much explains it, but how about the level of service, would you say?
For the trolley?
For the trolley in Miners Oaks and Mira Monte.
Well, the ridership is very high. The city of Ojai has put in applications for additional vehicles because the ridership has increased each year, which is also the reason why.
The fare box return is what?
The fare on the trolley is a quarter up until last year, and that was something.
Fifty cents now, but what is the fare box?
The fare box return right now is about 13%, and it's a rural service, so it has to recover 10%.
Oh.
Whereas SCAT is an urban service and has to recover 10%.
My only concern is this, if you're going to spend 300, the county's going to spend $300,000. That's like $1,000 a day for, let's say, 300 days in the year, not provide service, say, on weekends.
No, it's seven days.
I know, we do that now, but if we were to go to, say, five or six days, it'd be like paying a taxi company $1,000 a day to give people rides, you know?
Well, there's.
It just seems out of whack. I understand that the point you make about federal contribution isn't there.
Right.
Yeah, and state contribution, but it is TDA money.
And there is one other consideration.
Just let me make one more point, and I appreciate you coming up. There is TDA money, and that's always a very sensitive thing with public works people. That's really all I have to say. I'm not going to vote against this. I just think we need to make sure our eyes are open here, make sure that the people in the unincorporated parts of SCAT, the service by SCAT, are not, are receiving the same level of service. That could be a problem.
And you're aware that we have the demonstration service in Nylund Acres through SCAT?
Yeah, that's $50,000.
So whenever an area is identified where there is a need.
It's a mandate.
That's correct.
My question is, concern isn't over that. It's over simply the cost, and maybe there are ways to provide this, maybe the county can find ways to provide this at a much lesser rate. Nothing hits the city of Ojai. They serve, they have a representative in SCAT, I like him very much, and we have a good board, SCAT board is excellent, works well together. I do think we have to look at this a little bit.
Okay, and the Ojai study, which is mentioned in your board letter there that was completed last year, we're continuing to look at the recommendations in that study, and so there could be some changes.
Yeah.
Come from that.
Good questions.
I'm not against the people in Mira Monte or the people in Miners Oaks. My grandmother lived there for years, so people in Miners Oaks, Mira Monte, we want to provide the service. I'm just looking at the cost.
I want to thank Supervisor Flynn for his scrutiny in looking at the cost of service. I really encourage that. The Ventura County Transportation Commission also provides a lot of funding, and one of my pet peeves has been the Vista East service, which if you gave everybody a car, it would be cheaper than having them drive the bus, which it is, which they're doing now. So it's just, some of these things absolutely don't make economic sense, and I'm certain can be done for less, and I encourage a review of looking at our countywide bus system. But I definitely support this proposal. Of the entire county, the one thing that stands out to me of one of the better services that are out there is the Ojai trolley. I hear wonderful things about it, and they do get a lot of patronage, and it does serve a population that needs it, and particularly seniors, so I'm glad to be able to support that, and we'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second, and certainly no objection here, so that item does pass. Appreciate the information, Kathy, and good questions. All right, that completes, then, the discussions we had around agenda review items, consent items, and now we will move to our public comment period. Yes, we kind of wrapped it all in one. Okay, are there public comment cards? Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Goodwin.
Well, good morning, Honorable Board Members, Mrs. Johnson, and happy Fourth of July weekend coming up. I want to wear the right tie for the, once we start celebrating. Actually, I think it was ironic here, the assessor, Fourth of July was kind of about getting out of taxes from England, but that was sort of taxes without representation. Certainly, property taxes are the result of decisions that are made by elected representatives by, in fact, constitutional amendments made by the people of California, and so I think we're in, we're in good stead there with the bigger picture of taxes under representation. I wanted to come this morning, normally this time of year, I'm coming to the conclusion of my primary annual assignment, which is an assessment role. We do supplemental assessments as well each month that we send out, but the primary annual role is the, is the big project. So I'm a little bit like, you have to be patient with me, I'm a little bit like a kid about to go on recess for the summer, you know? After doing budgets and doing the role, and here we are, finally, I'm almost at that place where I'm going to be skipping and running. And also, I usually do a press release, which I'll be putting that together today, too, but I wanted your board to have the final numbers as I put together my press release and sent that out. This has been a very good year in a lot of ways. There's been some challenges, but I wanted to begin by providing some thank yous that I need to extend. First, to the CEO, the county exec has provided us with funding for over 2,000, approximately 2,000 hours of overtime this year that we made good use of. Although, you know, the budget last year put us in a somewhat of a difficult position to get the work done, we had excellent cooperation in a number of areas. Another was in the, with human resources. We had six employees retire during the year, and a number of them close to the March, and that begins our heaviest processing season, so we're in desperate need of new employees to quickly fill vacancies and also some temporary help. Human resources came through for us and facilitated the hiring of 14 new employees in those last few months. Among those, many of them were extra help employees. In fact, we used 21 extra help throughout the year, but we had about eight of them hired in that press, and HR moved very quickly in helping us address our situation. I don't think there's any way we could have done that massive hiring without their, without their help. Also, ISD has provided significant support. We have a number of crucial management systems, management reports that we produce in these last few months that help us make decisions, decisions about allocation of resources, and their help was, was very important. And in fact, I understand their machine that prints the role. I have to have one printed copy of the role I'll keep in my office. I'll be giving the auditor her copy, I'll give it to her today if she, this morning if she returns, but the, this is what the assessment role now looks like. I used to deliver it in hand trucks with about seven cartons with 10 reams of paper in each carton to provide that, and of course, now the unsecured role is one, the secured role is the other. I'd also like to thank the 10 cities and RMA for their help with, with building permits. We looked at over 20,000 building permits plus tons of plans. If you take all the construction plans and all the, all those roles, and were to stick them on one cart, we would be, we would be into the tons as opposed to pounds. I'd also like to thank the thousands of taxpayers who responded to our many, many letters, thousands of letters and forms that we send out, probably in the area of 50,000 of them, where we request financial information when people, if you've bought something recently, you saw a form in there where the assessor's asking you to give confidential information regarding the transaction, and the taxpayers have been cooperative and very supportive. Last but not least, I want to thank my, well, all of my staff. They, they were exceptional in this time. They were, they provided remarkable production. We increased our work in many areas. The managers I brought in today, this is, this is my team of managers in the assessor's office, and I wanted to have a chance to, in front of you, to thank them. Thank you each one. You get a tremendous job, you organize, you persevere, you worked long hours, especially these last three months. Thank you very much.
We thank you.
The county is well-served with their talent and with their perseverance and their dedication to public service. While we all look at the numbers, we want to know how much it is. Ultimately, the real goal is to make sure the taxpayers are primarily treated equally and fairly. And then in doing that and implying the law, there's a result. That result is, is the compilation of about 300,000 accounts, and when those accounts are all put together, we end up with a value that this year is going to be in the, I know it's going up, 8.1 billion. What was that, 85 points? I'll find that number pretty quick. But another thing that's worth knowing, too, is it's not just assessments, but it's exemptions. We have exemptions on 138,000 homeowners that we process, and we have about 1,500 exemptions that are part of everything from cemeteries, disabled veterans, home, I mean, excuse me, hospitals, museums, religious and schools.
How much is the exemption now for single-family dwelling? Seven?
That's a great question. It's the same number as it was back in 1972.
There was an attempt to change that to 15 in the state legislature, but it went down.
It's $7,000, which back in '72, most, a typical home was $21,000. I bought my first home for about $21,000, maybe it was $24,000, but that was nearly a third of the, anyway, that's another subject, but we can talk about that later. Just to give you a perspective, though, we exempt about $1.7 billion from the role for the 1,500 entities, everything from the welfare exemption, the schools, colleges, churches, disabled vets, and hospitals, museums. Those are significant numbers as well. So the, the total is a, is a 10.4% increase countywide. That'll vary from, from city to city and from school district to school district, but the, the overall number is going to be 10.4%, which is the largest in about 15 years in percentage terms. The 8.1 billion isn't even close. I mean, the last highest one was 6.6 billion, so that's whatever, 20% or so more than, than the previous records. So from that standpoint, the results are going to add up in that fashion, and I'd be glad to answer questions if you have any.
Excellent report. Any questions? Excellent work. Thank you to the managers, everyone. I know you have a heavy workload, and you have even critical periods of time that seems a lot heavier, is a lot heavier, so outstanding work.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate your support. It's, you know, I know at budget times, we have, I make my presentations, it's up to you to decide how much you want to put into it. We'll take those resources and do the absolute best we can. Thank you for.
And you are. Thank you so much. Good, good report. Thank you. And now I'd like to call up Carol Dean Williams. Thank you all.
Good morning, Board, and Johnny, I hope you're feeling better today. We've got to keep you strong. There's a lot of work for you to do. The state of California administered my Medi-Cal benefits without one problem. The county of Ventura has taken it over, and the summary is, I met with them yesterday, and they have deliberately entered me in the computer to deny me my Medi-Cal benefits. And I am told by Ted Myers that it is the Board of Supervisors responsible for this. So for a note, I emailed Mr. Bennett yesterday. He responded by email that he's going to make inquiries, but since your human service agency has accused the Board, I bring it to you as the Board. And I've received material from them, and they've had to lie, steal, and cheat. And so I'm asking this Board to get me some answers because I met with them, and that was very shocking, and I pinned them to the wall. Well, I heard Bill Fulton say SCAT's going to have to spend millions on new buses, and now that the governor's got involved. Now, I want the Board to understand there's acronyms. Do you know what an acronym is? And that there's knee al- al- oisms. I was going to have Mr. Bennett, our school teacher, tell you, because I know none of you know what that is. I was going to have him tell you what those were. So I have a few acronyms today. One is First Amendment Right Today, and the other is Fast Air Rapid Transit, acronym FART. SCAT couldn't scat, it's out of natural gas, so all the Board let a gasp. You see, SCAT is misnamed, so all the Board wants to misblame. Natural gas should come naturally, so come on board, fart is not nasty. Bart, just north of us, yes, these four-letter words makes Williams a cuss. A new name, a new birth, a new start, so come on board, let's fart. Here comes fart, everyone yells. Darn, these four-letter words are hell. Oh, if the SCAT Board acted smartly, Ventura County could have an adjective, fartly. Well, our governor, gosh, our governor has, has evoked First Amendment rights here. And by the way, these new poems are called Williams Pen filled with First Amendment Expative, natural gas. The governor's natural gas locally, did it smell or cause a fart loudly? Gas chilled to the bone, the same protection afforded gas from the tailbone. SCAT, only one choice, become fart. Hopefully, it won't smell up Bart. First Amendment Right Today, why, why so much fuss? Over touchy wordplay. Fast Air Rapid Transit replaces SCAT. Really now, is it the smells of a polecat? Gas chills to the bonehead, has your mouth ever caused a boner, said? The governor's natural gas locally should be used to power fart.
We'll look in, we'll look into it. That concludes public comment. At this time, we'll go to our board comments, and there's, there's three of us, so Supervisor Parks, would you like to start?
Thank you. I wanted to first ask that the Board close in honor of Paul Winchell. He did live in Westlake Village for a while, one of my favorite performing entertainers when I was growing up. There was always a little controversy in my house because I loved watching the Winchell Mahoney, the Joe Mahoney Show, and it ran at the same time as a show my father had for children called Schumpenstein, so I was always getting in a little trouble watching that instead of my dad. But I, he is also most known for the voice of Tigger, and we know that Tiggers are wonderful things. He also, in addition to being an entertainer, was an inventor, author, and also voice actor. He had invented the first artificial heart, and just a wonderful man. It was a real honor to be able to help him when I was with the city council in Thousand Oaks over a road safety issue. Just a wonderful man, and I'd ask that we close in honor of him. I also wanted to thank very much the Fire Chief Roper and Diane Morgan, our fire marshal. They attended a fire safety town hall I had in Ventu Park, which had over 70 people show up over the weekend, and it was just wonderful to see that many people in the community concerned about the issue of fire safety and looking at ways to improve access, emergency access in the Ventu Park area, something that I think is a serious concern. They have a lot of very narrow streets, and it precludes quick, swift evacuation as well as fire trucks trying to get up at the same time people are trying to leave. So it was good to see people come together and look at what they can do cooperatively all those streets. All the streets are privately owned. I also wanted to alert the Board, you may have read recently about a move by the Governor's Office to assist a developer in the Los Angeles County area to get a road easement through Amundson Ranch, which is a state park owned by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And that's a big concern. Nowhere in the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy system do we have private roads through those areas. And this could really be a precedent-setting move. There's a lot of property out there in the Santa Monica Mountains that isn't developed because of failure to be able to get that access through parks. We don't have private roads, obviously, through national parks. This particular parcel is, has a city park right next to it in the city of Los Angeles, so the park system would not even consider a road through there. But they're looking at, working with the state, which the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy is a member of, is a state agency, and with the Governor's push, trying to get this road through. So this is something that gives me a lot of concern, and I just wanted to alert the Board on that, too. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the information. Supervisor Flynn.
Yes, I think on that issue, the Board ought to write a letter to the Governor and maybe talk about some of the history of the Amundson Ranch and the controversies and so forth. This kind of opens up the issue, and I think it should not be open. Yes, I would ask the Board to adjourn memory of the people on my list. I'll give to the Clerk.
Thank you. I have two things. One, I would like to provide the Board members with forms for interest from your community in supporting the BRAC effort, the BRAC 2005. I have both volunteer and contribution forms, if you'd like to take some. The BRAC effort is in full steam in the sense that on July 14th, the BRAC Commission hearing will take place in Los Angeles at the Westchester High School from 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. There will be 30 minutes given to our local delegation to speak to our concerns, and we are working hard on pulling together the facts from the information that was put forth in the data calls to the Department of Defense that we believe were erroneously used in respect of the proposed realignment at our naval base Ventura County. The information, there'll be lots of information available, and I really am speaking of this this morning because there will be a second community briefing about our BRAC issues on Tuesday, July 5th. And since we don't meet again, I wanted to announce that today, July 5th at 6:00, Oxnard City Hall in the City Council chambers. It will be a televised meeting. And at that meeting, we will be calling on the community to, again, assist us with both volunteer efforts, letter writing, fundraising, so that we can continue to put together the response to the proposed realignment, which we, again, through pulling, finally getting some information out of the data calls, clearly says we have a maximum potential job loss of 6,373 direct and indirect jobs. So we're working hard on the strategies to address the criteria established by the BRAC Commission, which there's nine, and to address back to the Commission where we feel the information that was put together for the realignment is incorrect. And I would invite all listening, anyone who has a neighbor, someone who works at the base, just for the good health of our, not just our local economy, but again, the military importance of the base in our community, to come to the meeting on Tuesday, July 5th at 6:00. And I'll provide this also, there's a copy of it, Supervisor Flynn, this was just put together quickly. And certainly invite folks to attend and participate. And anywhere that you can get some of these forms out to get people who might be interested in supporting the effort, many ways they can support it, would welcome that.
If I can just make a comment. I think it's very important that people attend the meeting, but I do think that the defense of the nation issue is really very, very important with Point Mugu and Port Wainamen. Now, they're one base, Ventura County Naval Base. You really can't find such a perfect setting as we have there, with Laguna Peak running straight up east of Point Mugu for radar, with San necklace island for the testing area in the Pacific, and then with a port, and then with large staging areas at CBC. It just is, kind of fits a whole bunch of things that make it an exceptional base.
Absolutely. The military strategic position of the base is the number-one criteria that's evaluated, and that's the one we will be hitting the hardest in the response back to the scenario. And then I'd ask the Board to adjourn memory. I, too, have a list, and there's one that I know Supervisor and I share, Supervisor Flynn and I share. I believe Bobby is in my district, but I wasn't sure if you had her on the list, too, and that's for Bobby McCauley, a wonderful, wonderful woman, terrific write-up in the paper about Bobby, volunteered for numerous organizations in her 26 years here in our county. I knew her when I first moved to the county in 88, meeting her through the Ventura County Professional Women's Network, where she was very active as one of the organizers and active with the Savior's Road Design Team, the Ormond Beach Task Force, many, many others. She was a queen bee of the Red Hat Society, Chairwoman of the Mar Vista Neighborhood Council, Community Relations Commissioner for the City of Oxnard, helped to organize the multicultural festival. Absolutely was a beautiful, wonderful woman who gave 100% of herself to everything she did. So I'd ask that we adjourn memory of Bobby and others on this list. Okay? Concludes Board comments. All right, let's move to our regular agenda. We have some time here to get some work done, and that will bring us right to first item up on the regular agenda, is 35, the Agricultural Commissioners Item. We didn't pull that, did we? I have to pull my list. Mr. Butner, come on up, please.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board.
Good morning.
Mr. Johnston, I'm David Butner with the Agricultural Commissioners Office. I'm actually here just to provide any answers or questions, answers to questions that you may have concerning our agenda item. This contract provides the ability for us to bill for services that have already been provided in our sudden oak death quarantine emergency project.
Are there questions?
I do. Can you tell me about the extent that Ventura County is suffering from the sudden oak death syndrome?
We have, we're required under the federal program to inspect our nurseries on an annual basis to allow for us to ship any nursery stock to other states. We don't have any infestations at this point, but we do have to inspect all of the nurseries to assure that these symptoms do not occur on host products prior to shipment out of the county. The major means of transporting the disease is through infested stock. So anytime stock is moved throughout California from county to county, we run the risk of getting it in the county. We did have one, one small infestation in a nursery that was eradicated, and we're currently waiting for two samples to come back from soil samples that were taken at that nursery.
But we're not seeing it in our native landscape?
No, not as yet.
Hopefully not.
And hopefully we don't.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, move the item.
Motion, second. No objection to that motion, so ordered. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item up is 36, it's Ratification Approval of Grant Renewal Award. This is our Human Services Agency. This is for Ventura County Children and Families First Commission. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Johnston. I'm Pamela Grothe, Senior Manager for Adult Children and Family Services at the Human Services Agency. I'm pleased to be in front of your Board this morning to ask for your ratification and approval of the grant agreement with First Five and the accompanying subcontract with Kids and Families Together. These items help us continue our important work in recruiting and supporting foster parents to support our vulnerable children. And I really have to say, of all the programs that we have, the foster parent recruitment and support is probably one of the ones that we point to most in terms of our partnership and collaboration. The partnership with community-based organizations such as Kids and Families Together, who provides services under the subcontract under this agreement. The United Parents, who provides respite services to our foster parents, also with support of First Five Ventura County. And Child Development Resources, who provides childcare for foster parents, also supported by First Five Ventura County. First Five has been our partner, and together we've grown this program to support our foster parents, to recruit new ones, to train them with the help of the community colleges. Our community members have come forward, all the members of your Board have helped us along the way. Steve Bennett has really made respite and foster parent recruitment and support one of his cornerstones. And we really want to recognize and thank all of the foster parents who have answered that call and placed that call, I should say, to 654-3456. Such an easy number, you can say it forward and backwards, it's the same, 654-3456, for families who want to help. And I'll ask for your Board's approval of the recommended item and answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Motion, second, and no objection to that motion. It's great work, and we really appreciate the partnerships, and that is passed on a three-o. Thank you so much for your good work. Okay, item 37 has been continued to July 12th. So we'll move ahead to item 38. And come, oh, nope, we won't. 38, we're holding for a minute. Is that correct, Mr. Johnston? Are there questions still out there that you're trying to get some information?
I'm not sure.
I have done the discussion, I don't know if they're prepared to present it right now.
Okay. Have you, are you satisfied that your office has the information?
Given some of the additional verbal language in the presentation, yes.
Okay, and then we can proceed.
Okay. Are you carrying it, or someone coming in to speak from your office, Mr. Nicole, or who's carrying it?
Mr. Nicole would be carrying it, I don't see him in the audience.
We'll trail this for a minute.
If you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Or do you want to trail, it's fine.
Why don't we trail it for a minute? This is an important item, and I'd like to certainly have Mr. Nicole present and if there are questions. Let's move to item 39, Adoption of Resolution Authorizing the District Attorney's Submitted Application for a Grant. We get to see you on a regular basis now. You're doing good work out there. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair long, Board members, Mr. Johnston. The item before you today is requesting approval or adoption of a resolution to file a grant application with the State Department of Insurance for some $238,000. This is an ongoing grant we've had in the past and hope to continue.
Motion, second. No objection to that, so ordered. Thank you so much. Item 40, Apply for Espousal Abuser Prosecution Program Grant Fund.
Yes, same thing. This is through the State Department of Justice. It's an ongoing grant we've had in the past. This is a request to file an application for the upcoming year. Can answer any questions I have.
Questions. Motion, second. No objection to that item, so ordered.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for your good work there. And here comes Mr. Nicole. We will go back now to item 38 to commence public hearing regarding the adoption of the 2005-06 Memorandum of Agreement with the County of Ventura and the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. We have before you this morning the first reading of the proposed adoption of the amendment to the agreement with the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association. Principal elements of that contract are a 4% salary increase and an increase in the cafeteria benefit for the deputy sheriffs, and it is an 18-month contract. We've also had the opportunity this morning to meet with the Auditor Controller regarding her concerns, and we've made one adjustment in the language in one of the sections, and I have copies of that language change, if I can present that. The only change that you have there is the change in that the authority in that section regarding the payrolls, now numbered Section 522, calls for is the responsibility of Ventura County, not the Auditor Controller. This gives us the provisions and the authority to make the necessary changes that are the result of our conversion to the VCHRP payroll system.
Okay.
And other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from the Board? Again, this is a public hearing. Any questions from the Board? Motion?
I would definitely second the motion, and with a deep appreciation for the negotiating teams on both sides. I think this is excellent to see approval of this, and hopefully the Union will also support it. Ideally, I'd like these contracts to be a lot longer than 18 months, but this is definitely very positive, I think, for Ventura County, and particularly the level of dialogue certainly has increased. And we very much appreciate your efforts and that of the Union.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Just for the record, I did not have cards submitted under the public hearing part of this, sir. So again, we have a motion, second. Any further comments? And this will set for a second hearing, final adoption to July 12th at 9:30 AM. Hearing no further questions or comments. We appreciate your excellent work, and so ordered to set the second hearing and final adoption to July 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent work. Excellent work. One of those milestones. Now, if we've got a few more minutes, and we can move through. Item 41, it is a recommendation from myself to reappoint Dr. Weiss to the First Five Commission, and that's my motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next one is a recommendation to appoint and reappoint individuals to the Area Agency of Aging Advisory Council. This is our annual appointment process.
Second.
Motion, second. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Item 43, Approval of Cooperative Agreement, State Department of Transportation, and, oh, yeah, we can do this, come on up there. I said, "Oh," when I said that because we know how complicated what's going on behind the scenes on this one, but what is before us today, I believe is pretty straightforward. And again, this is item 43. And Mr. Britt, good morning.
Hi, Butch Britt, Madam Chair, your Board members. Only if you have any questions would I try to answer any questions. Peter DeHahn from VCTC is here, if you have any questions of VCTC.
Are there questions?
Yeah, I also seconded. It's nice to see people coming together to get Lewis Road improved. It was definitely a safety issue in terms of, you know, having these huge ditches on either side of the road and the university right at the end of all that. I think it was imperative that we move fast on this, and I'm glad to see that even the state cooperated on this one to some extent, and that we will be able to begin construction. Is it this year?
On this county portion, we will begin construction this year, on the state portion, mid to late next year.
Thank you for your efforts on this.
Now, it should be noted how much help the county has given to the university. I don't know if it happens anywhere else in the state of California, but we've always been there for the university.
I might note, too, it was also nice to see the university coming forward with their payment, their, it was nice to see with interest.
Yes. Motion, second, and I certainly support the motion, and it has been a lot of good work, creative thinking, and perhaps lots of emails back and forth to say, "All right, how do we make this work?" But we have, and we appreciate your good work on it, Mr. Britt and your team. So motion, second, and so unanimous.
Thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we've got three more minutes. Let's see. Item 44, Treasurer Tax Collector to Sell Defaulted Property. Is he here? Well, we'll hold that, then. He might want to be here. Item 46, we want to-
Move the correspondence agenda.
Motion, second. Hearing no objection.
I might mention that what's on it is the Governor's Proclamation for a statewide special election, so I'll move it regretfully. election, so I'll move it regrettably because of the incredible expense it will be to the county.
Absolutely. All right, no objection to that action, so ordered. All right, we've got, well, let me see. Shall we move ahead here with our?
Ready to support items forty-four and forty-five.
Are you?
I don't know if you want a discussion on that.
If there's no discussion on it, we will move ahead then with forty-four, and hearing, motion in a second on that, is that correct?
Yes.
No objection to that motion, so ordered. Item forty-five?
And I also move supportive of that, and I think both of these are excellent. We're being able to provide tax defaulted property, though it's not immediate, but this action will help to move that forward, one for the nature conservancy and one for new foundations, one to provide affordable housing, and the other one for conservation. So I think that's excellent use of those properties.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on that one, hearing no objection, so ordered. That completes our regular agenda. We will now move to our nine-thirty time certain, and the first one up, I'm not going to do. We're going to continue this.
I'd like to table a motion.
You know, as we, as I looked at this item, and as always, the thing that all of you who are here, who know and love Tom Burg, you always have appreciation when we have any event or celebration in the county that Tom's involved with, that you have just great humor, creativity, just a tremendous sense of life that he always brings to celebrations of life, whether they be retirements or just general parties. He always, he always has that, and that's what's so hard. I'm sitting here saying, "Okay, I've got to be serious on this one," but I guess we'll have another opportunity there. I don't have to be so serious. And we invited our morning speaker, who's always with us, to stick around. I'm not sure what happened there, because Tom always had some wonderful poetry that he too created as part of, part of bringing in his, right? But, okay, we'll get serious here now. On behalf of the board, we're here to take this moment to recognize a leader in the county family who has given so much to both the professional and the, and the county family in general for many, many years. Most of you know, all of you here know Tom Burg, and I'm going to read a little bit of Tom's history for those of you who don't. Does that mean I have to say he was born in Los Angeles? I won't say what year, Tom, it's in here. Spent his childhood in North Hollywood, which is where he picked up all of this sense of humor, I'm sure. Was a graduate of UCLA, a top graduate of UCLA, and his master's degree in urban planning, member of the National Social Science Honor Society and the National Political Science Honor Society, which also brought lots of humor in some of his statements. He launched his career in public service as administrative assistant in the L.A. Police Department, and then embarked upon his Ventura County career in 1974 as an associate planner, moved to a senior planner in 1979, manager of solid waste in 1982, planning director in eighty-five, and RMA director in 1988. He has been recognized by his peers for co-authoring of Modernizing the Central City: New Towns, In Town, and Beyond in 1974. He helped plan for the Ventura County Regional Land Use Plan, including the 208 Water Quality Management Plan, the Countywide Drought Management Plan, the Ventura County Water Conservation Plan, supervised the merger notification program, supervised completion of major, first major revision of the county zoning ordinance, oversaw the countywide rezoning for conformity with the Ventura County Open Space Element, managed adoption of the Ventura County Solid Waste Management Plan by six of ten cities, which was a true challenge in itself, oversaw year 2000 revision of supervisory boundaries, which was just outstanding work in the sense of those are always contentious and, and we had many maps, but we pounded our way through it, and Tom certainly was a significant lead in that. Recipient from John Johnston of the first annual Good Government Award in 2002. That is something to be proud of. Managed downsizing and an increased net cost recovery for RMA budget with very few layoffs. In addition, he's demonstrated a commitment toward the advancement of technology in the county's GIS system. Tom has also served on the Information Technology Committee, Disaster Council, GIS Oversight Committee, as a founding member and a current board member of the Management Council. Where he has excelled in the tug-of-war, sandcastle building, and other sports for the Ventura County team in the annual corporate games. Serves as vice president of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Ventura, is a member of the American Planning Association, the American Rose Society, and board member of the Cat's Cradle Rescue Organization. Tom also enjoys genealogy, gardening, ancient history, reading, and computer war games. So the entire board, we need to step down here and with Mr. Johnston and, and Mr. Kleibom and Mrs. Cohen and Roberta Rodriguez and all of us, and yes, you may.
What, you want to go first?
I don't think so, except to you.
That's an interesting question, no. I have on several occasions invited Tom to my office to solve problems, and when he comes in, he says, "John, stay in your district." I also like his letters to the editor. His agency is the only agency that has a flag, to my knowledge. One time I took the flag out of his office and I knew he was sitting in another office, and I probably took a chapter from Gerard Capouzi and marched in front of Tom with a flag flying high. He's so, such a neat person. When he comes into the boardroom, for some reason, everyone is happy because we see some humor there, and he doesn't even have to say anything. And I've often stopped by his office just to be humored up, and so I just, for all those reasons, plus his great abilities, I think with the help that he's made with decisions in our offices, that he has saved the county lots and lots of money. He's just a, such a kind person, and at the same time, not that a kind person can't be brilliant, but he's brilliant. He could just take a whole bunch of things and pull them together and the picture becomes He's been here a long time. I really hate to see him go into retirement. I pray that your health will continue to mend because you're such an outstanding person. Everybody loves you, huh? I hope when I leave the county, I can say that. How come you're all laughing? So, Tom, I have written you an email, but I don't know if you've seen it or not, and I called your home a couple of times. The fax machine always comes on, though. Anyway, thank you for all your good, good work, leadership, and you're just a splendid human being.
I feel everyone in the audience could get up and stand up and do testimonials about how great you are, because we all feel it, and I feel especially that I'm able to do it. And I just want to tell you, I feel like you're a kindred spirit. I went, I grew up in North Hollywood and was, didn't go to UCLA, but I was born there. And, you know, we have the same degrees, urban planning and political science, and just have a tremendous respect for you. I think you have a real sense of what's right and what's wrong, and you act on that, and you're my own personal staff hero for assisting me with an item that I don't, that would probably still be years away if you hadn't moved on it. And I thank you for taking the lead on that as being the director of RMA and taking on a staff position to move forward. I so much appreciate that. And now I'm glad that you will finally be freed up, so you can feel free to write anything you want in letters to the editor. And I look forward to continuing to read those. Thank you so much for your work.
I'd like to, we'll step down now and present this to Tom. I, just quick words for myself. When I started as a staff person in Maggie's office, Tom was one of the managers who made me feel like I had at least the respect to meet with me and talk through issues and the learning curve that goes with that, and, and there was just a genuine respect, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the good work that you've done always, and being a visionary and thinking of what is good for the County of Ventura, both this organization, but also our county, region, and our family, and thinking about bringing balance to the quality of life things that you believe in. And you were there in, in the groundwork for many of those decisions and our land use decisions that make a difference today, so you're so appreciated. We'll step down.
I wouldn't recommend this way if losing weight.
And I know you will treasure this.
I know.
But we are honored to present this to you.
A significant change. Yeah. Have to regroup here a minute, that was quite a milestone in our county family with the change with Tom Burg. Okay. Now, we will move to our next item, which is to recognize-
Is this where we're proclaiming its Parks Month?
Yes. Would you like to do so? Proclaiming Parks and Recreation Month. And Mr. Ruffin is here, thank you. And let me do some excerpts from the resolution that will proclaim this month, and it is a month that is recognized in the state of California as park and recreation professionals are recognized. And parks and recreate community through people, parks, and programs. And we truly believe that our parks in our county are precious, and, and we work our best to preserve and protect them as a natural resource in our county. The parks and recreation services support more productive workforces in the, in the sense of how enhances the desirability of locations for our businesses and our families and stimulates our tourism revenues, increases a total community development model. Helps certainly to promote health and wellness, the parks and recreation system, and helps in that sense in reducing health costs. It helps to foster human development and helps young people to develop and grow into healthy adults, and helps adults to live longer and healthier lives. We're pleased in our county to have such wonderful resources, a total of twenty-seven recreational properties, fourteen regional parks, five local parks and community centers, three leased parks, three golf courses, and two significant trails that serve our county. In 2004, approximately 600,000 visitors enjoyed Ventura County park facilities, benefiting from the range of services and over 5,700 acres of our parks and golf courses, along with those two trails that total 23 miles of trail opportunity, the programs that are offered. So on behalf of the board, we'll present the County of Ventura proclamation for July as Parks and Recreation Month and urge all residents to enjoy and recognize the social, physical, mental, economic, environmental, and community benefits to be derived from our parks, our campgrounds, our picnic facilities, our golf courses, our trails, our ballfields, our community centers, and the great value they add to our community. And it really is done in this county with a small but mighty staff. And I'd like to step down and present this to you, Mr. Ruffin, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul Ruffin with the General Services Agency. Andy Oshida would be with me today, but for some reason, he chose Hawaii is where he'd rather be. So he's back in about a week or so. So on behalf of the staff of the Parks Department, I appreciate the recognition that's coming to us, and on behalf of our various guests and visitors, we do our best to provide a high-quality-of-life choice to people by a variety of items that we offer, and we thank the board and the county executive office for the support you've shown over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. But I do have a comment that I hope that I will see another park improved and ready to go by this year or beginning of next year, and that's in the Santa Rosa Park that we're looking forward to after thirty-five, forty years of actually getting it developed, so a new one for our system.
I just thank Johnny for appointing you as agency head when he did, because you're such an outstanding human being and director of the agency. You really have done a super job.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Flynn. And Supervisor Parks, we're moving forward, as you know, in the Santa Rosa Park and to construct the equestrian center. Thank you all.
Good. We thank you.
Okay. I left too soon before. Anything else before I-
Nope, nope, nope. Oh, wait a minute.
Well, it can never be said too often that Mr. Ruffin and I worked on bringing to the county an additional, I know not always popular with everyone, but golfing opportunity at the Haffey Camp Canyon, which was ranked the best, the number-one affordable golf course in the United States two years ago. So Paul, thank you for your hard work on that and repairing it after the storms.
Quite welcome. Again, thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to move ahead with our twenty, item twenty-nine, nine-thirty time certain, and it is a pleasure for me to bring this forward, and it's a pleasure to see everyone here. We're going to recognize our outstanding CalWorks participants, and I'd like to invite Diana Goodrow- Diana Goodrow, who's Chair of the Ventura County Commission for Women, who will introduce the 2005 recipients. This is an opportunity where our outstanding CalWorks participants from our county's Job and Career Centers are recognized. And it is a real pleasure that the Commission for Women continues to do this and exemplifying the success of both the CalWorks programs, but the individuals who go that extra, extra work effort to really dedicate themselves to succeeding. And they do so with a great support network from the Job and Career Staff and also from the Commission. So, if you'd like to go ahead, I will step down and help you if I might in presenting the certificate.
Thank you very much. Good morning. It's wonderful to be here and I'm a big fan of Tom Burg. I just want to thank you for giving us the honor to do this presentation because I think the Commission feels it is an honor that we are able to do this this morning. And I want to thank all of you for inviting us to do this. These women that we are honoring today represent the best hopes and outcomes of Ventura County's welfare reform effort through the CalWorks program. Each of the honorees has seriously committed to their own self-sufficiency plans with impressive results. The local CalWorks program is designed to provide customized care management and a menu of supportive services to assist the clients in reaching their goals. Many of the clients honored here today are accompanied by their workers who have become their partner in their self-sufficiency plan. The Commission for Women is pleased to acknowledge the accomplishments of these women today. We also believe it is especially important to stop and recognize the vital work of the Human Services Agency of Ventura County, as well as the faculty and staff of Ventura County Community College District for their day-to-day work with CalWorks participants throughout the county. The women we recognize today and the people who support them are from all the Job and Career Centers in this county. And while we honor a few very special individuals, we also remember that they are representative of thousands of CalWorks success stories who have accessed appropriate education and social services in order to obtain the skills, confidence and self-sufficiency necessary to enter the workforce and to eventually exit the CalWorks program. Let me tell you a little bit about these special women that we want you to meet and to ask them to join me as I call the names. I also want to introduce the Commission for Women, who are all here, most of whom are here today, and I'd like for them to stand and please be recognized because they're doing an outstanding volunteer job for this county. Felicia didn't stand, but she's also on the Commission. I'd like to call up Danielle Exedy and all of these entities are here today. Danielle is a single mother of three children aged eight, six and four, and is living in Simi Valley. Beginning on the first day of the CalWorks employment program in June 2001, she showed the determination to use our grant and support to make life for herself and for her three children better. She enrolled in the Environmental Science Program at Moore Park College, then transferred to Cal Lutheran for a BS degree in sociology while working part-time, 15 to 20 hours a week at 8:50 an hour. This summer, she has willingly worked 32 hours a week as administrative assistant at a private business in Simi while taking courses ready for graduation in December 2005. Her goal is to become a social worker and we want to congratulate her. Thank you so much. She's from the East County Job and Career Center. I'd like to call up Karen Chris. Karen is a 43-year-old mother of a two-year-old daughter. Karen has been the house manager of the Tender Life Maternity Home since June 2003. She recently completed her administrative assistant certificate through Ventura College. In just a few weeks of completing her last class, Karen obtained a job through the DJST Marketing as a customer service representative. Karen has so impressed the two owners of this business that they left her on her own to manage, to run the office last week. Karen is a person of great strength, strength and ability who will succeed in anything that she does. Congratulations. Hi Karen.
Yvette.
Yvette, I'm sorry. I said your name wrong. Yvette Boss. Sorry. Yvette has been with the CalWorks program for two and a half years. She has always been compliant with the welfare-to-work activities and willing to do the extra hours in order to advance in life. She has been a full-time student and then a unit clerk under the Work Experience Program at Santa Clara Center. She is now employed and on the road to self-sufficiency. Yvette is continuing her studies in the evening and only needs two more classes to earn her Associate of Arts degree in liberal arts. Yvette then plans to transfer to a university where she will continue her studies to obtain a Bachelor of Arts in Computer Graphics. Yvette is a fast learner and always willing and eager to take on new responsibilities. She enjoys being challenged in life and then providing herself, proving herself that she can achieve everything she sets out to do. Congratulations. From Santa Clara. Okay, yes. Oh, thank you so much. The Oxnard College Job and Career Center nominee is Mimi Estrella. And help. Mimi, you were approved for CalWorks in January 2004. You have battled and succeeded many storms since becoming a client with CalWorks program. You have survived many challenging obstacles en route to self-sufficiency. Despite the challenges, you have continued pressing on with your education at Oxnard College and now is due to graduate with an Associate of Arts degree in December 2006. Naomi, you have worked hard and persevered as a single parent, as well as have future goals to attain both for yourself and your son. Your high learning in Congress... Oh, I'm sorry. I did that on purpose. We needed a laugh. Off. You have taken American Sign Language classes and currently use that talent at Oxnard College for the deaf and hearing impaired. You continue to learn valuable skills for employment as a participant in the Work Experience Program of the Athletic Department and the Business Center. Take this away and turn it off. I'm sorry. Naomi, you have now succeeded in obtaining your own apartment where you reside with your two-year-old son. This is beneficial to both of you because your son has asthma and you've been doing a great job. In April of 2005, your English instructor at Oxnard College noted that you had extraordinary writing ability. The editor of the Ventura County Star interviewed you and was very impressed with your talents and your journalism skills. Consequently, you were hired as a freelance writer for the Ventura County Star, Free Press, and with a month's time, you had eight articles published in both English and Spanish. These include three covered stories in Mimi Estrella, the magazine, and a cover story written for English Entertainment Section. Presented with this opportunity, you can now be well on your way to full-time employment as a journalist, which can lead to financial prosperity and our goal of self-sufficiency. To your credit, you are also on the dean's list this fall. Congratulations.
Before I sing that byline.
From the Oxnard Job and Career Center, Jamine Mudanza. Jamine, you participated in CalWorks on and off for a total of 51 months. And during that time, you attended two vocational training programs and left because of your need for a greater income. From 1998 to 2001, you worked jobs that paid from $6 an hour, $6.65 an hour, $6.75, $6.27. In May 2005, you started a job at Gold Coast RE/MAX that paid two and a half times that much and provided medical benefits. You didn't give up. You earned a GED in March of 2004 and you started and completed another vocational training program that has given you new computer skills. When told that you were nominated for this award, you stated that there were probably more deserving people, but I don't think people here think that. You forgot that along with the difficult job of being a single parent of two children, it took lots of work for you to reach your goal. This recognition that you receive today just will be a help to remind you about how strong you are and how much progress you have made. Thank you and congratulations. Last but not least, we did it in alphabetical order, Job Centers. Janine Mahoney is a 24-year-old, single mother of one child. Your son Eric is three years old. You have been in the Welfare-to-Work participants in October 2002 and even had a homeless episode in 2004. You expressed a need for time to find stable housing prior to participation in the work training program. We came to an agreement that you would be granted a 30-day good cause to secure stable housing. During that period, you were accepted at the Salvation Army Transitional Living. By having a stable living environment, you were able to focus and put your energy into finding a job. You did not have problems finding a job for very long. In fact, you were hired right on the spot by Subway. This job has really worked out for you since her childcare provider is not too far from your place of employment and the bus gives you great transportation. Okay. The last time that Janine was in the office, she was very happy about her job and overcoming her challenges. You have now been employed for over a month and we are sure that you will continue to in your...
Dream managers.
Oh, right. That's wonderful. Many, many, many more. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. I'm going to make a closing statement. Okay. Thank you. Is that all right? I haven't overextended my time? I don't get a chance to do this too often. Thank you very much for your time and attention. And ask for one more moment to bring to your attention a recently released study by the California Budget Project recommending that for CalWorks to work even more effectively, the state and the counties have to more closely study and evaluate the progress of those who leave welfare, both those who are working and those who are unemployed, and to advocate for the restore of the cut cost of living adjustment for the families that are participating in this program. CalWorks can only be called a success if the recipients who are leaving for work can support their families in a reasonable and provide for their families' needs. And we all know that that's extremely important. Thank you very much for your attention. I really appreciate it. And thank everybody who came today, all the workers and all the recipients and all the Commission and our audience. Thank you again. Thank you very much to the board. Appreciate it.
the key and the whole point of this program, that you will be able to get out of the welfare system and be able to support yourselves and your children. And the work you've done, the education you're giving yourself, it's just wonderful to see and wish you the best.
Thank you all. Oh, we got another 9:31. Okay, Board members, we have our next 9:30 item is item 30, Authorization for an Increase in the Criminal Justice Administrative Fees. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Mr. Johnson. The item before you this morning is called the Criminal Justice Administrative Fee. It was established in 1991 by the government code and it basically allows the county to recover some revenue regarding the booking services performed by the Sheriff's Department. In 1991, the board passed an ordinance establishing that fee at $120. In April of 1995, the board, in agreement with the cities within the county, the cities agreed to assign their right to collect the fees to the county and the county waived their right to collect those fees from the cities. As a result of that, we now collect these fees through the court fine process and it is collected from convicted prisoners. And that is how we obtain this revenue. The item before you today is a request for an increase in that fee. The financial spreadsheets establishing that fee based upon federal guidelines has been reviewed by the Auditor's Office and approved. And based upon the recommendation of the county council, we also bringing forward... County council advised that this process would best be handled in the future through a resolution. So, as a result of that, you have two issues on this in which you repeal the ordinance of 1991 and that you establish a new resolution establishing the new booking fee of $287.
That is correct. And this is the second hearing of the ordinance that was presented to us on June 14th. Other questions?
Second.
There's a motion and a second and certainly support that action. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
And it is final adoption. We had no cards. That is correct. Thank you. Now, we'll speed fast forward ahead to our 10 a.m. time certain, item 31, Public Hearing Regarding County Service Area Number Four, Oak Park Street Lighting.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Steve Williams with Public Works. This year, we are recommending confirmation and approval of service charges for Oak Park's County Service Area Number Four, which does provide a number of community municipal-related services for the community of Oak Park. Based on the budget and the amount of tax revenue, which is about 83% of the budget, we are not recommending any increase in service charges this year, which would have required... These services are financed entirely by service charges. They have been financed in this manner since 1986. Last year, we did have an election, a protest ballot proceeding, and the voters did approve the increases and approved a cost-of-living increase each year at a maximum of 3%, and that is the amount that we're recommending to your board this morning.
And I'll also move approval of this, and it's nice to see these areas coming together to support street sweeping, which unfortunately, the county couldn't otherwise do.
We don't have any cards submitted for the public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Hearing no objection. So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. All right, board members, we have next a 10:30 time certain, so we have some time to go into closed session, if we can get some work done there.
We can.
Be back out for our 10:30, and then we will have 11 o'clock APCD. So let's go and start on our closed session, get as far as we can.
All right, board members were back out. The closed session is complete. There is not an announcement from closed session. Will not be an announcement. And we will now move to our 10:30 time certain item which is very exciting. New lease agreement for the former Piru Bank property. Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Chair. I'm Monica Golding. I'm the board member. I'm the board member of the SEC. The business was recently sold to Heritage Valley Harvesting. And CRA law requires a public hearing and agency approval of a new lease with a new business owner. I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions?
Do we get any ice cream?
You bet.
Okay. I'll support that motion.
You scream ice cream.
Questions from the board? Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. And I certainly agree with it. No objection to that motion. And we're pleased that we have a new hold in there. A new ice cream.
Already operating?
Yes.
The locals are in there every morning.
Pumping that ice cream. That's right. It's a good stop anytime you're out in Piru. Thank you so much for your work too, Monica, on this. Appreciate it. That passes three zip. And that completes our board items until our APCD at 11 o'clock. Yay!
That's the main staple of the program.
Ice cream.